Welcome to our little work session here on protocols and decorum. I certainly appreciate everybody up to this point in the new year, new council, trying to work together and have decorum and protocols. So just a review, and everybody has buzz in, and everybody, I think, knows how to do that, and the council meetings, I think, are going smoothly. So I'll just leave it at that unless anybody has any particular thing on how, like, you buzz in or you talk or anything like that. But if we don't, I'll move on. I think we're cool. If you do for tonight, just buzz in. I'll be a little more liberal on letting it come, but I still will look, we'll keep it one at a time and we'll keep, I'll keep going through you as you do it. But that general working thing, good? I'll just leave it at that. Okay. Any particulars with working with staff or the protocols or things we're doing with that? Very good, and so I'll go to the two major items then. Okay, well, first, the two major items, code of conduct discussion and agenda public comment discussion. So first, we'll go to code of conduct, and I know there's been discussion by folks periodically on should we have a code of conduct, should we talk about a code of conduct, what's a code of conduct look at, et cetera, et cetera. So what I'm looking for today is a whole bunch of good ideas, which I think many of you have. I've asked staff to kind of put together when a summary or write down all the things you guys are interested in having, and I'm looking for a consensus for this. I assume there's a consensus, but I don't know that there's a consensus. So after today, I should be able to determine if there's a strong consensus for a code of conduct, but what exactly is in that? Looking for all y'all to input that, and then at the end of today, they are taking notes and we'll put that together and get it back out to you on what we believe you guys wanted, so that you can approve that. I am thinking of probably maybe getting a few of you with staff together to make sure this is the way you want it, and if there's a strong consensus, then bringing a draft back to you so that you can agree or not of what we or what you guys talked about, and we'll kind of maybe go through this a couple of times to get it to the place where you all agree. But I am looking for a strong consensus, and I assume there's going to be one, but I don't know that there's going to be one today. Today's goal is going to be, let's get everybody's ideas, let's put together something, develop a draft, bring it back to you, make sure we're tracking. Fair enough? Okay. All right, so, having said that, I'll just open it up for discussion on what you're thinking about looking at, and I'll just watch my monitor here and see where you go. Did you push something? Because I'm seeing no one. If you're pushing buttons, I'm not seeing any of you. All right? Alderwoman Newton, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'd like to start off by addressing the elephant in the room. We're here today on a work session regarding council protocols and procedures because sometime after the November 2023 election, the public became aware that the action of some elected officials passed, and then some from the '22 to '23 term, caused the city to endure an extensive amount of liability, close to $2 million. From the statement released by council on November 22, 2023, the following was contained: Certain actions of some current elected officials were inappropriate and wrong. The amount of compensation is small when compared to what a lengthy lawsuit and an ultimate finding of wrongdoing would have cost the taxpayers. I find it appalling that the actions of some elected officials led to such to happen here in the city of Davenport. I strongly believe we need a code of conduct that addresses some of those issues to ensure it does not take place again, and to ensure that no one on this new council ever puts the city of Davenport in a place where they will be, you know, open to liability for actions. As elected officials, we should lead by example and provide the highest standards of professionalism, civility, and decorum. I am confident that this new council will agree that we should enact a code of conduct. With the code of conduct, I think we should also include the proper procedures for communication with staff and city employees. I do believe that there's been some confusion with what has been provided to some of us as elected officials between what is said verbally versus what is provided in slideshows or handouts, and I do think that going forward, it would be helpful that we all have the same information and that it is crystal clear that we are all entitled to the same rights and privileges, and that not, there's not anyone on council that gets any privileges or information that the rest of us do not. I do agree with you, Mayor Mattson, that this is not something that necessarily would be drafted today. I think the conversation starts today and we get a consensus of whether everyone on council believes and agrees that this is the correct way forward. I do think that it would be helpful to have a committee set up to work on drafting such. I would gladly volunteer to be on said committee. During my election, I was the only candidate that identified the conduct here at the council as one of the major issues facing Davenport, and I do want to make this a priority to ensure, again, that Davenport is not in the same position that it was last year. The, last comment I will make, I did review some of the materials provided by Attorney Hare. It does appear that that's a good start for decorum, for a public meeting, but certainly I would want something in a code of conduct that not only outlines what is expected of elected officials, which quite frankly, most of it should be common sense. You should be professional, you should have courteous actions towards your fellow alderpersons and with the public. But unfortunately, we have seen that that's not the case, so we should have something that makes it clear what is expected and that has proverbial teeth of what happens when such is violated. I do not think that it should fall on staff to monitor the conduct of elected officials and that we should be self-governing. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Alderwoman Newton, sorry. Alderman Jopshen.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just want to express my support to Alderwoman Newton's comments, and also I'm supportive of developing a code of conduct, something when we first met after she was elected, we spoke of, and, you know, I expressed my support then, I express it now. It's something that, you know, I realize that we shouldn't have to recreate the wheel. There are other communities that do this, you know, we should be able to glean information. I also thank interim corporate counsel Hare for some of the information he's already provided, and, you know, agree with a lot of that there, and I think that's a good template from which to start, so that's it.
Thank you, Alderman Jopshen. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree, too. I think we need to have staff look into some different policies from different communities and maybe put a committee together and then come back with some recommendations, but I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Alderwoman Lynch.
Thank you. I also agree with that. I think that it's very important that we are, if we're asking for transparency and accountability from our staff members in the city of Davenport, the same thing should be asked of council members, and we should be able to monitor those and hold ourselves accountable as a council, because I also don't agree that staff should have to do so. So I would be excited to see a committee established, and I would love to be a part of that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lynch. Alderman Burko.
Thank you. I absolutely agree. We need to hold ourselves accountable for our citizens. We need a code of conduct that we can all abide by. That's it.
Thank you. Alderman Griffin.
Attorney Hare, I got a question. What, what means does a body like the city council have for holding someone on the body accountable for their actions?
By statute, it's pretty much limited to two things. One is censure, which is like a public admonishment, and the other is removal.
Okay, so if we develop a code of conduct and we say, these are the things that we agree as a city council we're going to do, and then somebody on the council steps outside of those and the council becomes aware, the two actions that are allowed by law are, you can admonish them, which is essentially publicly saying, you shouldn't do that, and then your other course of action is to bring them up for a vote to be removed from, from the city council.
Correct, with the, with the reminder that removal is statutory and it has to be one of the seven grounds or eight grounds that are listed in the statute to remove someone.
Okay, because if I remember, if I remember right, when I read the original city code, like, in the first chapter, there was a whole, a whole chapter about how aldermen could hold, hold accountable other aldermen if they didn't show up for city council meetings and if they misbehaved and et cetera, et cetera, they could dock their pay, they could take all these sorts of actions. How come we can't take those actions anymore?
You could still do that. I wasn't incorporating, I mean, the code requires meeting attendance and things like that with the specified punishments that you just said.
So those are still?
Those are still valid. I was talking about something bigger.
Okay, okay. All right. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what actual, what actual tools the council would have to be able to, to hold each other accountable. It's one thing to say that we're all going to agree to good behavior, but it's another thing that when, which was the case, when somebody was behaving badly and we're confronted with it, simply said, I don't care and I'm going to continue to do it. So, and I do, do want to point out that the, the lack of decorum and behavior on the city council didn't, that, that didn't just come out after the election. That was well-known. We removed a city council person from the city council for poor behavior, and another city council person was put on communication protocol by our legal staff. So it was noted that there was poor behavior on the city council. The city council itself felt like it was limited to doing two things, which was, we can either publicly admonish you, which doesn't do much, or if, if the actions rise to a certain level, then we could do removal. And when those actions did rise to that level, we did ultimately move for removal. So I felt like the council used the tools that were at its disposal, and so I just want to know if there are other tools and other ways. I think that's something that this subgroup needs to really look at, is the actual teeth of it. And it sounds like there are plenty of volunteers to be on that subgroup. I do not need to be, and I think that is the appropriate way to go, trying to, trying to devise something like that by a large full committee probably isn't wise, but I think the mayor picking a few people to go about it is, is a wise way. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Griffin. Just checking, Alderwoman McGuinness, are you online with us? Can you hear us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we've just kind of started, we're talking about code of conduct, and people are giving their thoughts. I don't know if you've heard any of that, but if you want to say anything, we're talking about, and so far, many of the folks that have spoke, there, there's six that have spoke, talked about maybe a committee getting together and working with staff to draft a, a code of conduct and bringing it back to council, and that's kind of where my head is, but I see others, so I'm just kind of giving you the, the real quick synopsis. I see another alderman wants to speak, and then I'll get to you. Is that okay?
That's fine. That's perfectly fine. Thank you.
Roger, okay. Alderman Kelly.
Oh, I'll be brief. I just wanted to say I would love to volunteer for the committee as well.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Okay? Anyone else? Okay? Alderwoman Lynch?
Yeah. Okay. Is anyone? Sorry. Anyone who hasn't talked yet? Alderman Reinert.
Thank you. I just want to caution, when looking at a code of conduct, that if we're not careful, it can become a document that evaluates relationships and friendships and doesn't put the emphasis on spoken word, written word, and the interplay between staff and city council members. We don't want it to be a good boy, a good old boy or good old woman relationship where friends can protect other friends or folks that don't enjoy another person's behavior because of some other belief other than the professionalism. So I just caution that we keep that in mind as well, because it's kind of a double-edged sword to set up standards and leave too much leeway in the standards, or not enough leeway in the standards, that it doesn't become something that can be threatening to individuals just because someone doesn't like you. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Reinert. Anyone, okay. Alderman Dunn. Tim Dunn.
Is there any way, instead of going to staff or this, or, you know, I guess council, and I'm, I'm for it, don't get me wrong, is there any way that anything can be outsourced on this and not have a go-to staff?
You, you talking about like getting the committee together and developing it?
Yes, yes.
Have someone else develop, help?
Somebody else outside of staff and, and working with, you know, working with council, working with staff, just to outsource it so it doesn't become a problem in-house between staff and council? That seems to me that, that is something to be talking about.
Something to think about. I got that. Okay, I'll let everybody talk and then maybe come back to that thought with everybody, and then I'll see. Okay? Before I go back to folks twice, anybody who, I think the only one is Alderwoman McGuinness that hasn't spoke? Alderwoman McGuinness, would you like to speak before I go back to people twice?
Yes, and thank you for letting me do this. I'm sorry that I'm not there today. I, I do feel like we need a code of conduct. I certainly understand Alderman Reinhardt's concern about, you know, about it not being politic, I think what I hear saying, it being politicized or friendized or good old, you know, sort of a, if you're in, you're in, and if you're out, you're out, and I understand that. But I am concerned, given what we've dealt with, and I did, I did send something to Brian, which you all saw, so I am definitely in favor of it. I think if we, I think if we, because it does go, and I think, he was also talking about enforcement of something like this, I think we have to consider social media, we're in that world. I saw things, and I, you never want to do something as reaction, but it seemed especially disruptive this time. It's a factor in how we have a relationship with each other. It's definitely a factor in how people deal with each other. We see this all the time. Would hope for us to become like, sort of, national politics, maybe? And if we, if whatever is in our code of conduct is how, if we can settle on these things and hash that out, I think that, I think then if, if we get to the enforcement part of it, then we can look at the, it's looking at the things in the code of conduct. I think you have several people looking at the things in the code of conduct, then you have, you have, you're going to have different voices, right? So it's not going to be, you're all pals or something. And I think, I understand that concern, and I think that's important. I was very concerned in what we've gone through in the last year, and a little before that, in that, as I said in that piece, and I don't know what was said about that, maybe nothing, was the, the burden that ended up on staff enforcing it, because we didn't deal, we, we, we really didn't deal with it as a council until it came to one particular situation where we sat and, and decided what was going to happen. And so that's my concern, is that we need to be, as a council, very, very, very aware of the imbalance of power, that we have power that we don't even understand we have. It impacts our staff relationships, and perhaps to Alderman and Tim Dunn's point about having someone work with a group outside, you know, might be helpful in that way as an outside perspective to this. But I, my concerns are more, I believe that this body will come up, if we do a code of conduct, will come up with something that's good and that will work for everyone. I have trust and confidence in that. My situation kind of really does go to more, how do we then deal with that? How do we deal with issues if they arise? And that's, I think, needs, we need to be certainly thinking about that as we decide whatever this code of conduct is. So, my thoughts.
Thank you, Alderwoman. And now go back to other folks. Alderwoman Lynch.
Thank you. I really think there's a lot of truth to Alderman Reinhardt's mentioned about, I think what I'm really hearing, too, is like retaliation. So if there's a scenario or somebody votes a different way, I know we're all human, and I know we'd like to say, everyone wants to say, it's not personal, however you vote. And I truly do believe that wholeheartedly, but people are human, and there might be sensitive topics that arise in the future where somebody could be offended, and I could see where, you know, perhaps you could rally your, your confidants together, right, and kind of put somebody out. So I think however we move forward with this, we need to make sure that we're very, very clear of what the boundaries are. I don't think that we should jump to conclusions of, let's remove this person. I think that we need to try to find a creative way to maybe have like a strike system or something that we have agreed to that protects each and every one of us to make sure that nobody is open to retaliation if it is something that would occur. I would hope not, but again, we are only human and elephants do fly, so that's pretty much all I wanted to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lynch. Alderwoman Newt.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the, the people can hold elected officials accountable at the ballot box, but in order for that to actually take place, the people have to be aware that, of what our actions are. And again, in going back to the statement released by the council, it specifically says, certain actions of some current elected officials. That's plural. That's not one. Only one elected official was named, but the officials leads me to believe that there were more actors that did wrongdoing that caused the city to endure such liability, and that essentially is my issue. Now, the public was aware of certain allegations, allegations that were reported in the Quat City Times, such as insubriety, alleged racism, and possibly harassment, but the extent of allegations were not, were not made clear until the statement was released well after the election. And it certainly appears to the public that there were certain elected officials, that there may be more than one by virtue of the statement, and that is essentially one thing that I want to ensure that we don't let happen again, because if elected officials are acting in a way that's opening up the city for liability, the people of Davenport deserve to know, so that the people of Davenport can ultimately hold them accountable at the ballot box. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman Newt. Alderman Dunn. Rick Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Comes down to three things: integrity, honesty, and respect for one another. That's something we all learned in grade school.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Griffin.
Yeah, so I think to Alderwoman Newton's point, I think the admonishment piece would be the option that you have to kind of let the public know that specifically what the bad behavior is. I think what you'll probably find is when it's wrapped up in a personnel issue, that you, you, there's going to be some limitations of what you can put out there legally from an employer standpoint, but understood that getting the information out there, I, I think the admonishment piece is, really all that is, is publicly saying, your behavior is lacking and you shouldn't do it, right? That's, that, that might be the avenue for that. And I think to Alderwoman Lynch's point, I think the law pretty well defines what you can, what, which you can take, remove somebody from the council for, and so from a retaliation standpoint, you would have to be able to prove one of those seven or eight items has, has been done with proof, right? And so I think the, the law is very clear about that and tries to protect from, I don't like you or your position, so I'm going to take you off. You actually have to have met the criteria set by the state. But, but I also agree about the, the step-up process, you know, potentially it starts with a verbal from the mayor or HR or whatever that, whatever that looks like, and then the next step is a public admonishment, and then the next step, if it meets the criteria, would be removal, which should be rare, and it has been rare, and we shouldn't be looking at this as like something that, you know, the council should be having to deal with routinely. It, it should never happen, right? The guidelines should be there, we should all make an agreement, we should do what Alderman Dunn said, and basically uphold those values and be good members of the council, but unfortunately, from time to time, you'll have people who make bad decisions while elected officials.
Okay, see no one else, unless Alderwoman McGuinness, because I can't see your button, would you like to say anything else?
No, I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So, pretty solid, strong consensus, want to move forward with the code of conduct, that's pretty obvious to me. So we will, I will have to talk to staff to see if we can find someone. Unless I'm hearing no, I'll talk with Ms. Merritt and others to see if we can go out there. I have people in my head, to see if we can find, understanding, we will pay for this, and if we're cool with that, and I'm not seeing anybody yell at me, and if you want to yell at me later about that, you don't want to say it here now, but I'll, I'll take it that we're interested and see if we can find someone first that could help members of the council develop a draft of a code of conduct to bring back to the full body. To do that with all the notes that we took, I took some, you took some, to encompass the things that you guys talked about. That's fair summary. If I'm not hearing anybody say no, then I'll, I'll move forward, we'll see if we can find someone to help the council committee. I'll form a small committee, and I know there's a lot, so everybody's basically volunteered to do it except one, probably won't be nine, but give your input, we'll, we'll tell everybody who it is, so you can give their, your input, and then we'll try and find somebody to facilitate this, to get with the goal of having a draft back to you. No time limit at this point, but we, we won't take our time. Is that fair? Anybody have a problem with what I just said? Roger that. Okay, that takes care of code of conduct. The next issue we want to talk about, I've had discussion, or people interested in the, what I call the logistics of the city council meeting. It is my responsibility to run the meeting and handle the logistics, but I, as most things we do, try and get council input on how we do this. So the big thing is, concerning the agenda that I've heard, is reference public comment. There are many different ideas in many different cities and in many different places on how that happens. So when I'm done talking here, before I go to council, I'll go to Ms. Merritt and her staff to kind of give a quick summary here of what other places do. And then again, same concept, I'll be looking for discussion and then consensus of if, if we want to adjust, change, or do whatever with how we do the agenda, understanding it's my decision to do that, but I certainly want input, and before any change I would do, I would want the council to be cool with, or at least the majority of the council to be cool with that. So having said that, Ms. Merritt, if you'd like to give us a little synopsis of what other people do.
Sure, thank you, Mayor.
Or whoever you have, do that.
Yep. So just to intro this project, you have two handouts that are in front of you labeled one and two. One is an analysis on which cities and how they structure comment on individual agenda items, so your discussion items, and then the second one is on the more just standard kind of public with business, public with comment portion of the meeting. There's a lot of information here, and what we found when Courtney started working on this, which I want to thank her for all of her work, this has taken hours and hours and hours, and she probably is now an expert at how all the different cities across Iowa and entities run their meetings. What we found is that this really ballooned, and she had to really work to understand what each entity's meeting structure is because of the number of nuances. So that's why this may look overwhelming in front of you, but we wanted to make sure that you had all of the information. This is intended to be a start to this conversation, and then as I spoke with the mayor today, I want to be clear that the staff does not have a staff recommendation for you. Our ask, or the ask that was of us, was just to provide you back with, with how things are run. So I will turn it over to Courtney to, to walk through what the themes are.
Thank you. All right, so if we look at page one, you'll notice that there are actually only four cities, including our own, that allow public comment on individual agenda items, so you can see that just straight across. Iowa City does request public to sign in if they intend to speak, so they request that prior to the meeting, and they just request that actually at a station that they typically put in the back of chambers. And then something to keep in mind is that Davenport allows the highest time limitation at five minutes versus the three minutes allotted for the other three cities that allow these speaking opportunities. So just some things to keep in mind as we look at page one.
Okay, keep going, I don't see any, at least right now, they'll probably get you at the end.
Sure. I'm going to go ahead and move on to page two. So every city provides an opportunity for public with business. This is pretty standard across the board, but some, some things that I'd like to point out are, five large cities require citizens and/or residents to pre-register to speak, so you can actually see that through Cedar Rapids, Des Moines, Iowa City, Moline, and Rock Island, and then a And then a third actually have caps on the time limitations. So if you go down to the time limitations, you can see that Des Moines, Dubuque, I believe, Iowa City, and then Rock Island also have caps on their time limitations. And then seven out of the 12 cities analyzed actually have time limits of three minutes or less imposed. So I think that was really interesting in our findings when we looked across the board. And just some, because there are so many nuances, as interim director Merritt pointed out, additional information is provided below for your knowledge. So again, this is really just a stepping stone into this discussion, but we wanted to provide as much information as we could.
Okay, anything else? All right, and so an observation I had, and then I'll open it up. There is a significant difference between what we do and other cities do in that, like our cycle's two weeks and we allow comment publicly multiple times at both meetings, but many of the other cities only put it like, for example, on public talking at committee of the whole versus council, but they don't do both. So a lot of the public comment is what I would interpret at the committee of the whole and not at the council, just to be clear. So having said all of that, what are your thoughts? Alderman Rick Dunn.
How many of these communities livestream?
I can double check that for you.
See, that's where I, my biggest concern is that when we livestream this and somebody gets to the podium and says something, that goes out to the public, and I believe that makes us, the liability on us for what they say. That lately has been concerning because, you know, I, a lot of my colleagues, we all sit up here and we don't have law degrees and we don't know, you know, you got freedom of information, somebody can say this, somebody can say that. It's really a fine line of what can they legally say, what can't they say? And we sit here and go, God, should they have said that? Should we have stopped them? So, you know, that's a big concern of mine. So for me, livestreaming any of this, that needs to stop.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Alderman Jobson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Courtney, thank you for putting this together and any other staff that contributed to that time. My only gripe is that as I get closer to 50, you're really making me remember that I need my cheaters, so I'm feeling, I'm feeling, I'm feeling bad. Yeah, oh, thank you. Sorry, I got myself. So I did have a question for interim corporate counsel, Hire. You sent out some information today, and I second Alderman Dunn's request of what do these other communities do about live streaming? I've kind of changed my opinion over the course of time from, hey, we should just let it rip, you know, show it to, yeah, I'm kind of on the other side of the fence, other side of the fence now, and like to kind of compare what we do. But in the memo that you sent Attorney Hire, you had made a comment or a recommendation about potentially having public with business after we adjourn the, the meeting. How, did I read you correctly? And how would that work?
That was an addition that the, our friends at Lain and Waterman suggested as an alternative. I don't think that it works practically any different than having it during the meeting, other than if it becomes a problem after the meeting, you just have to shut down the building and close it that way as opposed to shut down the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was just trying to figure out the logistics in my head with something like that. As I was, thank you. As I was scanning some of this, I, you know, you see some of the, some of the communities requiring some sort of registration or sign in. You know, I'd be curious how they, how they pull that one off as well. I think it's Dubuque that requires, it says those residing only in Dubuque can comment. You know, I'd like to see how they do that, you know, do they, you know, show some form of ID or reference a driver's license number or something when you sign in online or, you know, how they do that, you know, because I'd actually be kind of in favor of something like that, right? You know, I mean, I'm gonna try not to say something defamatory, but you know, get some of these people from over in Illinois with the potential agenda that, you know, get a little, there's a hot topic button and they come over here and, you know, want to spout off. Yeah, we don't need that. That's, that's not productive and does nothing for us. So, you know, city residents, hey, I want to hear from you. I don't know how restrictive I want to be of city residents, but I know we got to kind of curtail it a little bit because we've been, you know, I think allowing people to have a little too much leniency, right? We got to swing that back. And I would like to say, hey, if we can keep it to Davenport residents, because I want to hear from you, you're the ones that matter. The rest of you, hey, come watch if you want to participate, but quit chirping from the peanut gallery at me, right? And so that's, that's, that's where I'm at with some of those types of things. And I thank you again for putting this all together.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Alderman Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to know real quick, what is the difference? So when we, when we discuss live streaming, we're saying that the city of Davenport is streaming live, and that's, we're, that's viewed on the website, correct? And then all of our sessions are then posted to the public site for anyone to view at any given time? So what's truly the difference between live streaming and then it's public, it's open to the public anyway? What's, what, you know, what is the difference? I guess I'm just curious as to why that's a controversial thing right now, live streaming if it's still out there after the meeting?
That's, I guess, part of this discussion. Either one is us republishing a potentially defamatory comment. And so the question or the decision for the council is, do we want, do we want to be in that position? I mean, to Alderman Rick Dunn's comment, I can tell you, sitting here sometimes as someone who has been practicing law for 30 years, it's, it's really tough to tell when somebody, they toe the line, have they crossed over the line? It's tough. Oftentimes, they probably sound like they have, but it's really more the manner of how they've spoken is the issue. So, I mean, it's, it's tough to make that call even from somebody in my chair as, and so I don't, I don't harbor any ill will. It would be tough for you guys to make the call as the presiding officer, and that's why I made the recommendation I made in that, in that one document that was distributed.
Thank you. I, I could see how both, I really could see both sides now that you've mentioned that. I don't, as a, as a civilian or constituent myself, if, if I were to know that we were going to stop sharing our meetings, I would feel very strange about that. My first question would be why? What are we hiding? At the same time, if you truly want to know and you really care, maybe come down and watch a meeting and participate. But also, I've noticed that there are a lot of folks that get up here sometimes and they, they say mean things, or it feels as if you're being attacked, especially for as a new council, because we, we're not involved in the old council and what happened. So when there's five of us back here, we have a lot of folks coming up and they're really directing their anger, perhaps not at us, but we're here taking the brunt of it. It's discouraging and it almost feels like, why are we volunteering our time to such an extent to just be spoken to so poorly? So I, I could really see both sides. I'm not really sure where I, where I lie with that, but that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lynch. Alderman Reinards.
Thank you. The question I've got is if we're going to shut down, potentially thinking about shutting down live streaming. Does that mean that the news media that may be recording what we're doing, we're going to make them shut down as well? Then they can just go ahead and turn around and, and restream it or put it back out there after our meeting was over?
Right, but that's not us republishing potentially defamatory comments. That's somebody else's issue. I mean, a lot of the people that sit in, people have a right to attend public meetings. People have a right to record public meetings. So people out here are live broadcasting our meeting. But there's a difference between them doing it when they bear the responsibility, the liability, and us doing it.
So if we were to shut down our live streaming while we were still in session and, and a news media was recording it and they put it back out again, the public would have an opportunity to hear what our constituents were telling us, and we would not be restreaming it. We wouldn't be liable, but they would know what we were talking about.
Well, that's correct. And, and people have many, many ways of being able to communicate their message. I mean, they don't have to do it at public comment during a public meeting. The comments that you all receive during a public meeting should actually be very germane to the business of the city.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Reinhards. Alderman Newton.
Thank you, Your Honor. As mentioned before, one of my concerns in going forward is always ensuring that we are protecting the city from any further liability. Attorney Hire, I understand you sent us several memorandums, but as one of my colleagues has mentioned, not everyone that sits on council possesses a law degree. Could you please give us the layperson's explanation of these memorandums, specifically in regards to, you know, First Amendment rights, if, if any, what we can as a council do in terms of rules or restrictions? And then lastly, when it comes to defamation, what liability, if any, could the city possibly be facing for republishing of such comments? Thank you.
That's a lot. Well, again, people have a right to attend public body government meetings. They have a right to record them. They do not have a First Amendment right to speak at a public government meeting. Most governments in Iowa allow public comment as a courtesy. So that's, that's the basis from which everything else goes. From there, the, the maker of a potentially, not a potentially, but the maker, the speaker who uses a defamatory statement or makes a defamatory statement has liability to the person that they're defaming. Anybody who republishes that statement bears the same amount of liability. So if we allow, if we live broadcast a defamatory statement, we are subject to liability. If we repost it as part of the video of our meeting, we are subject to that liability, just as if we said it ourselves, or as the one, as the one case says, they're both instances of defamation. So I think that's it in a nutshell. If you want me to address something else that I missed in that, I'd be happy to.
I, I've read the memos and obviously I'm familiar with some of the case law. I just want to ensure that everyone on council is fully aware of the conversation and what the law actually is so that they can make an informed decision when the time comes.
Thank you, Alderman Newton. Anyone, Alderman Brook.
So I just want to understand this. If we are live streaming, which we have to record our meetings, correct?
We don't have to record our meetings. We're required to do minutes of our meeting. Our, our course of practice is to record them and to post them, but we don't, there's no legal requirement.
Okay. So if we continue to record, just like we have, and then we go and we put that out on our website, and not put the public comment out with that recording, that takes part of that liability away, correct?
We would not be liable for republication of a, of a defamatory statement if we don't publish it on our, publish it live or publish it, post it on our video.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Brook. Alderman Rick Dunn.
I believe we'd still publish it. We just wouldn't be doing it live to where we wouldn't be liable, right? If somebody got up to the podium and said something and we didn't put it out right away, staff went back the next day and could block that part of it out, which we would if it was something that we found that wasn't appropriate for somebody to say, we would still publish that or could publish that the next day on our website. It just doesn't go out live and it takes the live, the chance of liability away from us. That's the way I see it. Am I correct?
Yes, is the short answer.
Alderman Jobson. Thank you, Alderman Dunn.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So this is to Mr. Mayor. So I guess if you're looking for thumbs up, thumbs down, or opinions from us, you know, as I mentioned, you know, my, my viewpoint has kind of swung back, you know, and so, you know, the way my pendulum's swinging right now, I would, my opinion is that we no longer livestream our meetings and that we record them, we post them with the ability to edit them, to minimize. So, so if you're asking me and we're, and the topic of discussion is what do we do going forward in regards to broadcasting our meetings by the internet, my opinion is we record them, make sure that we're not in any position of liability, put them out on the website. People want to watch our meetings, then, then have at it. And they can write us, they can call us and communicate with us as elected officials, however they see fit after that, so. For what it's worth.
I'd like to speak to Alderman Guinness at some point, if I could, if we're going around again.
Yep, you'll be here shortly. I hear you.
Thank you.
Alderman Griffin.
Thank you.
Yep, Alderman Griffin.
So to your point, Alderman Jobson, I think what you're really, what you're really talking about is how much risk that you minimize by the decisions you make. So if you, if we said we are not going to rebroadcast meetings, that eliminates the risk of us re-broadcasting defamation. If we decide that we're going to non-live stream and then evaluate if any defamation took place and then post the videos, you have not eliminated your risk because potentially whomever reviewed the live stream may have missed something or have a different interpretation. So you're leaving up a little, a little bit of, of risk. But I do think taking away the livestream option does eliminate most of the risk. I'm open to it. You know, I would say that, you know, fundamentally, one of the things I believe in very much is that the public needs an opportunity to interact with the city council, and we need to be able to hear them. So I don't like reducing the number of minutes and, but we do have this issue also where, to be quite honest, not a lot of the public with comment has been people bringing issues. It has been more of personal attacks and things that maybe aren't really germane to what the city's doing right now. And so I do know, like the Davenport Public Schools, they make you sign up prior to the meeting and say what you're going to speak on. I'm open to that potentially. I'm also open to going, stopping the live broadcast, having a review, and then posting the meeting so that it's there for the public. I would say if we went that route, that for full transparency to Alderman Lynch's point, if you did remove a defamatory comment, you would basically insert something here that says, right, the video was edited at this point, we're now moving to, for legal reasons, the video was edited at this point, we're now fast forwarding three minutes and 30 seconds to the meeting. I don't know. It's something worth looking into. So the question is, I did like that you gave a lot of, here's some things you should consider for public with comment. So should the public have comment during a public meeting? Yes, I do, I do think we should continue with public comment. Should we during a work session? No, we don't currently, and I don't think we should. Sign up to speak? I'm a strong maybe. I'm leaning towards, I like that idea because then it controls that you have the opportunity to speak, but you're going to speak to something that is germane to the city council as opposed to, I just had an idea pop up and I'm going to get up and speak until the buzzer goes off. Repetitive comments allowed or not? I do, I do have trouble with that one because sometimes people, they spend all week putting their thoughts together and they came down to city hall to talk about that one thing, and then you say, well, somebody already talked about it, so, so please sit down. But also sometimes we have 37 people who stand up and say the, say the exact same thing. So sometimes I like when the mayor says, not formally, don't get up here and talk, but if you, if you have something new, please bring it to the council. Otherwise, if what you've said has already been said, then, then let it be. And then I think all of the other stuff, well, you get down to, should signs be allowed in chambers? No. Applause only permitted for proclamations and special recognitions. I'm good with that. I'm good with that. Visual aids? We haven't, haven't allowed, really. And then written paperwork submitted to the clerk, right? So I kind of like all that other stuff. To me, it comes down to, do we limit the three to five minutes? Do we, how are we rebroadcasting it? And do we limit where people speak? So I rambled a little bit there, but I'm trying to give you some ideas, Mayor, of where my, where my head's with it. I don't, I don't want to overly limit the public's communication to the council, but I do want to make sure, I can tell you, there are people who came down to speak to the city council and didn't, because public with comment became something that they didn't want to be a part of, right? And we need to protect them from that as well.
Thank you, Alderman Grub. Alderman Reiner. And then Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you. My opinion on the, on the public with comment is, at least as a newbie on city council, and what I've seen, the way people carry on, is that there are a number of people that want their five minutes of fame, and they want to revisit a topic that's been visited multiple times prior. Is it possible, correct me if this is not logistically correct, that at the end of our, our business portion, that we can say, we are now going to turn off the livestream, and the public is still permitted to come up and speak to us? If we had a switch up here and make the announcement that we would still give the public the opportunity to share with us what they came down to, to speak to us about that was important to them, and yet we'd still have the ability to do away with the potential liability associated with streaming negative comments? It's just a matter of just saying, hey, wait a minute, we're not going to stream this anymore, so we're turning you off. We want to hear what you've got to say, but we're not going to stream it and carry on. That way, we don't have to edit, and we still have the opportunity to listen to people that have a legitimate complaint. Just my thoughts.
Thank you, Alderman Reiner. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think, you know, there are two things in front of us, which, you know, we have, we have certainly looked at, and I, and I hate, part of me hates the idea that, you know, something that has worked generally, we are now, find ourselves in a situation where we're questioning ourselves a little bit. And I'd like to talk, I'd like to speak first to the, the high idea of people being able to talk, and where they can talk, and, and Courtney, this is, I can't even imagine, because I know you had to call people back, and just wasn't just taking it off, you know, an email and stuff like that. So this is a lot of work, and I appreciate it. In any case, it seems to me, just even looking at this and scrolling through, we probably, we have, we offer either in during agenda items or public with comment, we offer, most people offer three minutes, then we offer five. So there's a thing to look at. Even in terms, and I don't think, I don't hear anybody saying, people shouldn't be able to speak to agenda items. I think I hear, some of the, in reading this, some of the people, some of the cities don't even allow, you know, agenda items to be discussed, but we do, and I think that's a good thing, because this is what we're voting on. So I think we need to hear that. But I think that three minutes seems to be more than norm than our very generous five minutes for, you know, what we do. I, I am, I would hate, I would hate to, in terms of livestreaming or not livestreaming, I would hate that the people of Davenport would not be able to, in their homes, watch the city council or committee the whole meetings live. It is unreasonable to expect people in it with 167 square mile city to be able to come to a meeting, and there are many people who do watch it live. So the, the idea of not airing it live makes sense, kind of then fills up my spine a little bit. I mean, that is, that is the essence of timeliness. We are presenting it, and people are hearing what's going on, and I, and I think that's fundamentally important, important to the city. I, I, my, my problem comes then with, then we say, okay, so we keep it live, or maybe some people, I'm hearing some people say they don't want to see it done live, and I think that's really not a good idea. I'm very disturbed by that idea, as a matter of fact. But the other concern I have, and if we're, if we're not doing it live, and then we're saying, okay, who had defamatory comments? And so now we're asking, it's going to be staff who has to do this, to edit what they see as a defamatory statement. That is a political act, or will be read, and could be seen as a political act by some, and maybe we don't care. It's very hard, I think as Attorney Haire has told us, to, it's very hard to figure out, was somebody defamed or not? And that kind of speaks then to the idea of the, you know, the public with comment at the end, the sort of open-ended type comment that we have. And, and so to that point, I think Alderman Ronheart's idea of saying, okay, we're done with it, we've streamed the meeting live, now we're, the meeting, you know, that's ended, or, or we've ended the livestream, you can come up and talk. It'd be very interesting to see if people chose to continue to want to talk when it wasn't going out to the, you know, to a group of people. And so, you know, I am certainly concerned with the way this has sort of spiraled over the last, and it hasn't been, it's been a number, just thinking of the last three years, there have been a number of times when there were certainly concerns, not necessarily even concerns necessarily at the city level, but just what's happening in the world. And I, and I think some folks who have been on me will remember, on council with me will remember this. And so, you know, you want people to be able to have comments, but I don't, I worry about not airing the, the, the meeting live. Now, my understanding, and I, at least one of the cities, I don't know in the, this whole document, I want to sit down and really look at all of this, that there are some cities, it looks like here, which I, that they don't even allow comment during committee of the whole meetings, which is kind of strange, if you're not be able, not being able to comment on agenda items on that night. But I, but there are, I believe, cities that don't have public with comment every week. So we are a two-cycle, we are a two-cycle, you know, agenda, and let's, and let's just talk, and I'm just talking about public with comment, I'm not talking about commenting on agenda items. So that's an interesting concept as well. If you, you know, said, okay, we won't, we don't have public with comment at the end of our, at the end of our, say, committee of the whole meetings, because it's a long meeting already, and we're talking about each item, right? So, but maybe on city council nights, we do have, we do allow public to comment, and we may limit it to three minutes. And I strongly endorse what Alderman Jobchin said, and have for years, that I want to hear from the people of Davenport, and I think, yes, I think the way you deal with it is, perhaps people sign up, and they have to, and they have their ID, and if, they have a driver's license, or they have a valid piece of, you know, whatever they, identification that says, yeah, I live in Davenport. I think that's important. I too feel like, while I certainly care what people think across the Quad Cities, what I want to hear at my meeting is people who, who we are representing. So, but I would ask y'all to think about perhaps not having public with comment at every meeting, signing up, yes, I'm Davenport, and do it on city council nights, where we have a shorter agenda generally. So I'm not hard and fast on that. I really, really feel like we need to give our citizens access, and live access to our city council meetings. I really feel that this has all kinds of ramifications for other kinds of meetings as well, for our commission meetings, everything else that happens. So when we, whatever we do here, you know, may ripple down into our commission meetings, and all of our government-related meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Grub.
Yeah, so you bring up an interesting point, and I do agree. Ideally, we livestream the meetings, and we don't have to worry about rebroadcasting defamatory comments. And I do think if you say, okay, we're going to do public with business, we're going to turn off the live, the live feed for that, and then, and then it can be put on at a later date, or it cannot be put on, I don't know. But it still leaves, leaves you open to the agenda items, public comment on agenda items, where the trend we've seen recently is, no matter what the agenda item is, I'm going to take it back to whatever thing I came here to, right, to boast for. And, and so you're not going to be able to take that unless you say, well, then every public comment throughout the meeting is, is going to be stopped for livestream, which I think logistically becomes very hard, or impossible. But also, it makes it so that the people at home, really, the, they're not getting the meeting. So maybe, maybe you don't rebroadcast the public with comments at the end of the meeting, but you do broadcast the comments from the agenda items. But when you make them, when you make the public sign up to speak at that agenda item, there's kind of something there that says, you're speaking on this agenda item, please, you've got five minutes, please keep your comments directly to what they should be. But then it kind of becomes incumbent upon us to say, you're off-topic, and your, your five minutes is over, right? And sometimes that's really hard to do, because you want to let people continue to speak to the city council. But in my opinion, you've, you've got the issue there, that if you're going to show that, you do have, you do have a little bit of risk there, as far as rebroadcasting goes. I do like to hear from the people of Davenport as well, Marion, and Alderman McGinnis, and Alderman Jobchin. I do agree on that. I think it does become problematic when you have, like, a business owner who doesn't live in Davenport, you know, right there. Or there's, there's going to be some instances where you actually want to hear from somebody who doesn't live in Davenport. So how you, how you figure that out, I don't know. I just wanted to bring that up, where sometimes the person who needs to speak on the topic isn't a Davenport resident. So potentially, again, you say, if you're here to speak on the topic, for whatever the agenda item is, do it. If you're here for public with comment, we want to hear from people from Davenport. If you're not from Davenport, reach out to an elected official and talk to them outside of the meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Grub. Alderman Tim Dunn.
I am a big fan of not livestream public comment. And another thing that I've got a problem with is every time they come up to the podium, and they get off-topic, and they go ahead and comment on somebody's name, which we're supposed to be addressed as a whole, and we're not. Numerous times, we have not been. Tired of hearing it, tired of seeing it. When we tell them to sit down, sit down means sit down. Get out means get out. We need to, we need to come back with that, and we need to get it straight.
Thank you, Alderman Tim Dunn. Anyone else? Okay, so I have things to think about. We've struggled with this for a bit. We've went, we've adjusted before. We've tried to put some protocols in place, some adjustments in place, some warnings in place. Sometimes they work, sometimes they haven't. We put a lot of pressure on staff, in my opinion, to try and look things over, and see if it's appropriate or not. So I firmly believe there's, I will make adjustments. I don't know when I will make them. I will maybe talk, and feel free to call me anytime. As far as public getting in contact with, I mean, I think everybody here has heard from the public many, if you haven't heard, I mean, I've been here all day today, and my phone hasn't stopped. You can probably guess what about, but I think public has many opportunities to talk with us. It's whether, when they talk with us as a body, I think it is important to allow them to talk to the body, but there needs to be adjustments to how that has happened. Because as the person who's in charge, I do struggle with, when do I cut you off? When do I not cut you off? When you're appropriate, when you're not appropriate? When you're defamatory, when you're not defamatory? When do you try, and I don't want to get in an argument with you. And sometimes I've had to ask people to leave, and I've had to, you know, ask people to sit down, and then they get upset, and then they think they should have the right, and so I will just simply say right now, there will be adjustments. And if you have other thoughts or ideas, I won't make it immediate, but I probably will do something soon. And, but again, as you contemplate this and think, call me, see me, whatever, and say, hey, I forgot about this, or I thought about this, just think about this, and then we'll see where it goes. It won't be for next cycle, but it might be, I'm anticipating an adjustment for the cycle after. I like the idea, to be frank, at least now, whether I do it or not, I like the idea of public comment at committee of the whole, but not a council, or vice versa. Maybe committee of the whole's the place for the agenda item discussion, in both council and public, and then at council, it's not. I'll go, I'll see with that. I've talked, just to be clear, I've talked to, you know, I think everybody knows I'm the chair of the Metro Coalition, I have conversations with how they do business. We are the most open to having people talk with us, and people are surprised that we are the most, that we do that. They are, that we do some of what we do. Having said that, I think we'll still allow that, in some fashion. So unless there's something else that you want to throw at me, feel free to grab my head, or call my phone, or meet with me, or talk with me on something you've thought about before that you think I should know. Anything else reference how we do business up here? And Alderman Grub mentioned it, when we do work sessions, we don't allow public. That'll stand. That's for us to discuss, the public to hear. It's whether we do it at the council or not. Anything else, folks, that we should think about, or I should think about, on how we do business? Thank you for your interest, for bringing professionalism, for bringing communication protocols, for bringing the attention to how we do business together. I am very happy. I thank everybody, and I've already got a lot of good comments from folks about how this council so far has been very professional, very interested, very intentional about how to talk with each other, and how they talk with staff. So that is a wonderful thing, so you need to be applauded. I will also say, for the majority, the council previous was also that way. I will say that. There were some instances where we had to do some things, and that's unfortunate, and that's very hard for us to do, but it was required. Moving forward, I think these, everyone sitting here now has the full intent to be professional, and just take the interests of the city at hand. So thank you for that. If there's nothing else, Alderman McGinnis? I appreciate the conversation. So I think everybody has the schedule for the budget, which is going to be the focus now, and I know Ms. Merritt wants to say something else.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor.
I apologize. Goal set, yeah.
So for goal setting, you all have a stapled document in front of you. It would be helpful if, over the next day or so, you could review this and make sure that the goals that you submitted in your intake form are reflected here, in the themes that are in that document. If you believe that your submission is not accurately reflected, if you could reach out to me or to Stephanie Bly, she is who initiated the first email to you, that way we can update this, and then we will be sending out the next ranking exercise on Friday morning. So just want to make sure we have everyone's items reflected the way that you want them to be, and then we will go from there. That way, we have all of that ready for you for the work session on next Saturday.
Roger that, and I'll just say, that third is to talk about our pillars. There are six. If you don't know, please look at those. Those are solid, but please look at those. Then we go to goals, the council goals, and we try and get it to very much the priorities. And, and the goal of this is so that we can have a council direction to the city administrator, so she can develop the work plan for staff that they execute through the next year, and every month, you get those updates. But that's the point of this, right? To have a consensus from the council, strong consensus from the council on what the specific priorities are, that generates the work plan for them to execute their business, right? And the outliers, or the onesies, or those type of things, fine, probably can work on, but those aren't the priorities. It's the priority of the body to direct the city administrator to execute the work plan. So having said that, other comments? I see Alderman Grub.
Yep, just one question, Administrator Merritt. When these are sent out on Friday, like, usually, there's like a blurb and paragraph form that went with the categories, is that how they'll be sent out?
Yes, that's, we're working on the narratives right now that go with it, but having to merge several comments together. So there will be a description with them, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Be careful driving.